Good morning. We've reached the 10 o'clock hour. And I will call this meeting to order. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner and veteran Walter Nozad.
Join me in fudging the flag of our republic. A pledge allegiance to the fine of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item of business will be public comment. The Board of County Commissioners conducts the business of Douglas County and its citizens during its meetings. The Board may impose reasonable, content-neutral restrictions on public comment, such as comments that are on topics that are not within the jurisdiction, authority, or control of the Board of County Commissioners, or if the content of the comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer may order the removal of any person whose statement or other conduct disrupts the orderly, efficient, or safe conduct of the meeting. Warnings against disruptive comments or behavior may or may not be given prior to removal. Hand clapping, making remarks or gestures from the audience that may interrupt, interfere, or prevent any speaker from commenting should not occur. The Board of County Commissioners can deliberate or take action only if the matter is listed on an agenda properly posted prior to the meeting. During the public comment period, speakers may address matters listed or not listed on the public agenda as long as these matters are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. The open meeting law does not expressly prohibit responses to public comments by the Commissioners. However, responses from Commissioners to unlisted public comment topics could become a deliberation and a matter without notice to the public on the advice of legal counsel. And to assure the public has notice of all matters, the Board of County Commissioners will consider Commissioners may choose not to respond to public comments except to correct factual inaccuracies, ask clarifying questions, or ask that a matter be listed on a future agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board Chairman. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and that you should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. Public comment will not be continued on the next page. Taken on Liquor Board Agenda Items, if you would like to provide public comment on Liquor Board Agenda Items, please provide your public comment during opening public comment or closing public comment. Public comment must be limited to matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment will be addressed to the Chairman and not to members of the public so that the Board may take future action on issues that are raised by the public. At this time, public comment will be taken on these matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment is now open.
Good morning. Jim Jackson. First thing I want to do is make something very clear. There has been a rumor spreading around in our area that I am against any ordinance that restricts truck traffic on any of the roads leading off of Johnson Lane. I want to make it very clear right now, I am in favor of any ordinance that restricts truck traffic on any road in the Johnson Lane area. That being said, I hope that this thing goes away. One of the other things is that I think you have created a problem that you're not aware of yet. We had a rainstorm not too long ago. They are paving the road that is going back to the Knox pit back there on Painted Rock. It's not finished. They've run out of materials or run out of money. I don't know which one it is. But they've paved part of the way back. Now, we were told that that wouldn't happen for at least five years into the process of this. Well, they're paving it now. And it has already started to create some problems out there. Now, I know it's on BLM land. You have no jurisdiction over it, but you made a deal with Knox. One of the things that we are very tired of, and I think this past election brought it out on a nationwide business, is governments not being honest with us and what they've told us. And we were told that that would not happen for five years, but it's already happening. One of the other things that we were told was that blasting would not take place out there. Well, now the agreement that was made, blasting can take place. One of the problems is, is how are you going to notify us? It says Knox will notify the county within X number of days before blasting takes place. Well, that's fine that they call you and say, we're going to blast. But how about the people riding horses out there, walking their dogs out there? And all of a sudden, a large explosion goes off. And somebody gets thrown from their horse because they had no idea there was going to be any blasting out there. Something needs to be done that they notify every resident in the area when that's going to happen. And if that doesn't, believe me, the first person that gets thrown off a horse out there is going to come after you. And my wife's out there riding this morning. So I would be one of the first. Anyway, this whole thing up there, as you well know, has not over yet. And everybody is still up in arms about it. But I'm serious. I am in favor of any ordinance that blocks truck traffic on any road in that area. And since there was only two people I talked to, that one of them's here in the room now, one isn't. I don't know where it started from. So, thank you.
Morning. Julie Duda. The Town Trash Fund is a current issue due to the proposed 35% increase. As a person with finance and budget background, I've researched the proposed hike, attended town board meetings, and discussed the fee hike with county staff. Tuesday, I participated at the town board opposing the 35% rate increase. Reasons for opposition. Number one, there's a need for an audit. Past audits focused on payment processing and accounts payable procedure. No audit has been done on the expenses charged to the trash fund. A 35% rate increase will cost this town $1 million over two years. With an increase of this size, an audit of expenses should be standard procedure as the appropriate fiduciary action. Number two, regarding salary benefit cost allocation, this requires review, adjustment, and to be made public. Minden has published their salary benefit cost allocation and made it part of the public record. I suggested Gardner Ville should do the same. Number three, three years ago in 2022, a 20% trash rate hike was approved. Now, a 35% hike is proposed. 55% in three years. During the same three years, Douglas Disposal also had two rate hikes, one for 4.86% and one for 3.29%. The county would never approve a 55% increase for this private company. So why is the town allowed a 55% increase without an audit? Trash service is mandatory within the town limits. With unprecedented consecutive rate hikes, customers need reduced service options and a provision for opting out. Carson City has a process to opt out. More oversight is needed by county staff. Fiduciary action is necessary to determine if there is public fraud or not. I have suggested an audit of expenses to the town board as a proactive step. Will the county take fiduciary action?
Thank you.
Ellie Waller, for the record. Respectfully, Chair Rice, this is directly related to your district for which I reside in. I urge you to honor my request to postpone the December 17th first reading of the South Shore Area Plan. I may not live in Tahoe, but spent 20 years addressing Tahoe plans, participated several years on the development of the 2012 Regional Plan Update, starting with Pathways in 2007, was a citizen representative for the Placer County North Tahoe Area Plan for four years, and also participated two-plus years on amendments brought forth, of course, other related meetings. Tahoe Township changes ultimately affect the entirety of Douglas County. The South Shore Area Plan is not ready for prime time. It's in flux. One meeting in June that was not needed to be notified, noticed, is not fair. A week before the BOCC meeting is not enough time to review those changes. Respectfully, Vice Chair Hales, I also encourage you to honor this request. As you are aware, there are many moving parts that still need to be understood about the process, let alone proposed zoning and map change proposals. Allowing uses to be by right and not requiring a special use permit, as an example. No new uses allowed as well. Frankly, December 10th is also too soon for the Planning Commission to hear some of the proposed changes until those Commissioners understand the ramifications of a town center boundary line change. Incentivizing redevelopment is not the issue. It's the unintended consequences of not currently permitted uses. It's the hope that there will be comprehensive staff reports. Tables showing what is allowed today and what could be allowed with the town center overlay is a must for transparency. Procedural issue perceived. Having the Planning Commission provide recommendations on a draft that is still in flux, in my opinion, that has not been released to the public, is disingenuous. Until the area planned draft is ready for prime time and TRPA has agreed that it's ready, no public hearing should be held. Releasing a revised area plan a week before the Planning Commission doesn't allow the public or Commissioners to compare the changes. What is the rush? I believe there are incentives that will be approved even without the Barton Sub District. Even though there is no procedural issue with an outgoing Board of Commissioner reviewing, possibly commenting, and making recommendations on a non-action item for first reading, and then a new incoming Commissioner coming up to speed and actually voting on a contentious, misunderstood, broken process, in my opinion, I urge you, as a Board, to direct staff to postpone the planning and Board of County Commissioner December meetings on the South Shore Area Plan and take them into 2025. Thank you.
Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. Honorable Commissioners, these statements are no reflection of your very fine Sheriff's Office and Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District, who will do all they can to effect safe and effective wildfire evacuation in Lake Tahoe. Please make this public comment letter, as well as the attached independent Lake Tahoe Basin Wildfire evacuation analysis in its entirety, along with the attached press release and frequently asked questions document, part of the record and minutes for this meeting. Copies of these documents have been handed to the meeting staff. Please ensure the minutes and the record reflect the entire colored copy of the independent evacuation analysis and not a black and white copy. I want to emphasize that the purpose of the independent evacuation analysis from its inception, and as it remains so today, is to raise awareness and inform land use planners and the public of potential wildfire evacuation public perils that exist within our unique Lake Tahoe Basin. Douglas County and its partner agencies, including the TRPA, continue public peril land use planning policies and projects that result in increased height density and coverage within the Kingsbury Concentrate Town Center, of which will result in increased public peril intersection evacuation choke points during a fast-moving wildfire. This while purposely ignoring any discussion whatsoever concerning the roadway threshold capacity needed to safely get the public out of the area. No public agency, including this body, should be allowed to make it harder for people to escape a deadly fire. The county must provide a roadway wildfire evacuation capacity analysis indicating how long it may take to get residents and visitors safely out of harm's way during a fast-moving, no-notice wildfire evacuation. Emergency evacuations are either no-notice events or planned events. No-notice events occur when an emergency incident poses a sudden immediate threat to human life. Historically, no-notice evacuations have overwhelmed emergency responder resources and defied the rapid implementation of emergency operations plans. Studies of no-notice wildfire events consistently report irrational human behavior during the evacuation, especially when evacuees are confronted with smoke and flames from an approaching wildfire. Additionally, specifically relating to the proposed healthcare subdistricts, potential significant and adverse environmental effects, and potential public safety adverse effects on wildfire evacuation times within an already public peril-capacity-constrained area plan roadway system, TahoeCleanAir.org objects to the currently proposed South Shore Area Plan amendment. The objections are listed in my letter, which the clerk has. Thank you so much.
David Nelson. I want to make this clear that I'm speaking as myself, not for any other group that I belong to. And first thing I want to do is congratulate Commissioners Gardner and Tarkanian on their successful run to remain on the Board. I'm talking today about Item 5 on your agenda. Since it's for presentation only, I thought this was the proper time to make my comments. I know you've been negotiating with the developer on this project. And I was a little surprised that only one Commissioner on this Board contacted me to see what I would like in that negotiation. And I thank him very much for doing that, and you know which one you are. Anyway, I'm talking about this. I own a lot on this project that's north of this project. It's 1.48 acres. There are several of my neighbors who also have lots of this size or a little larger. It is 2/100ths short of being an acre and a half. Now, we're talking about buffering these things, and what I would like is for you to consider allowing the six or seven lots that are just north of this project to do a lot split, to split off the half acre or approximately a half acre so that we can do our own buffering against this intrusion to our properties. So I don't know how that should be done, but I would like to see that. By doing that, you're giving us an opportunity to get back whatever loss we might have from this project being built next to our larger lots. And so I'm pleading with you to consider that possibility for us so that we can have some control of our destiny. Thank you very much, and I appreciate any consideration you will give us. Thank you.
James McCallum, for the record. I want to briefly talk about the situation on Riverview between 395 and the golf course, really about the golf course. I was in a near accident the other day where the car in front of me stopped suddenly. Well, I couldn't see from my position. I could not see the golf cart crossing the road. Person in front of me saw it. It was a tailgating. I was able to stop. This is a concern in most cases where there's a golf course, where the golf course crosses the road. There's either some kind of overpass or underpass for golf carts so they're not competing with traffic on it, which is a very busy street. At the minimum, I would suggest that the same kind of signals that we have for pedestrians on 395, where there's something that's high up and lit that shows people that someone's crossing, so that we have some notice. And I noticed on one of the items that there's the possibility of funds coming from a developer for that road. I actually think the golf course should pay for it. But unless there's going to be some overall solution like an underpass, I think at least some signal so that cars can see beyond the car right in front of you to see that somebody's trying to cross. A golf cart just isn't as visible. So I hope some consideration would be given to that kind of signal. So at least it's easier for the cars behind to see that the car in front of me is going to stop. There's a golf cart crossing. So I would urge that consideration. Thank you.
Maureen Casey, for the record, speaking as an individual. I would like to echo what David Nelson said and extend my congratulations to Commissioners Gardner and Tarkanian for their successful reelection, and also to David Nelson for his election to the Rancho's GID. I also want to say publicly that, as a registered voter, I am very proud of Amy Bergens, her staff, and all her volunteers that have worked tirelessly since June to ensure the smooth and problem-free process that we have undergone these past five months, six months. It's been incredible. And for me, as a voter, I can't say enough to express how I appreciate everything. Thank you. Just wanted to get it on the record.
Jeannie Hizuru, for the record. And for those of you who don't know it, I'm married to David Nelson. So obviously, my property is just north of Item Number 5 also. And I just want to call attention to many of the people who are new to this area that in 1996, when the county put forward their master plan, they had designed a lot of density population to go into the ranchos. There's 500 acres that surrounds the ranchos, which is destined for about 2,500 homes. But in those years since that master plan has come into effect, it has become known that we do not have the water. We do not have the water. Now, maybe that formal presentation hasn't been presented to every citizen here, but the water is not there. That master plan, that zoned a possible receiving area density in the ranchos is not appropriate anymore. And this development that's going to be considered under Item 5 is kind of like breaking the glass right there. That's the start of trying to get those properties zoned with the density. So I do consider that the zoning down from the 1 and 1/2 acres of our properties and our neighbors' properties, it's not appropriate to zone it so that it's 8,000 square foot properties. We do not have the water. The county does not have the water. I don't care who has ever said we did. It is now known officially with water studies that we do not. Thank you. Especially, the grid does not have it.
Good morning. Larry Goss, for the record, Deputy Fire Chief, East Fork Fire. Members of the County Commission, I appreciate your time today. East Fork Fire would like to publicly support items G through J on the consent calendar in regards to communications infrastructure in the county. As you're aware, the communication system is in desperate need of overhaul and upgrades. And we appreciate the effort being put forth by Jennifer Davidson, Carrie Easton, and Brent Finster, identifying the needs, prioritizing them, and making things happen. As you know, these communications infrastructures are needed for firefighter and safety of the deputies there at DCSO. So we appreciate that effort. Another thing I'd like to just throw out today, because it could tie into communication infrastructure. It's not on the agenda. I believe it's probably a future agenda item, but the East Fork Fire is leasing land potentially for some cell towers. These cell towers, I just wanted to put some positive spin on what these cell tower sites could do for the community, especially the communication system. There is ability there, if needed, to provide potential backhaul off of the current system that's in need of backhaul repairs. It's also the ability to hang communications equipment. But for the public, it really increases access to 911. It increases the ability for Douglas County Emergency Management to push out phone calls and data related to emergency management applications, including evacuation zones, et cetera. Provide increased communications at the high school in case of a major emergency there, as well as providing members of the community who rely on medical devices that are tied into cellular communications to have an ability to transmit that data inside that area where there's decreased cellphone availability. So, appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Slade. The primary responsibility of government at every level is to ensure the public health and safety of its citizens. I would hope that all of you would agree with that. At your August 15th meeting, Item 3 concerned the second reading of an ordinance that would limit truck traffic on the eastern end of Johnson Lane. Coming up to the final Board discussion prior to the vote, it seemed to nearly everyone in attendance that the Board was prepared to approve that ordinance. Here's what some of you said. Mark Gardner. It's within our jurisdiction to identify roads within our county and place a weight restriction on them in accordance with county code and NRS. Respect in the health and safety of our residents? That's once again the primary concern of us as a Board. Danny Tarkanian. My concern has always been the safety of residents that live in that area. That's my biggest concern. Charlotte Hales. I have one driving interest, and that is I want to do what is in the best interest of our residents. Walt Nozad. The residents of that area are our primary concern, health and safety. Wes Rice didn't mention the health and safety of the residents, though he said at a meeting at the senior center earlier in the year, there's not a member of this Board that thinks the Painted Rock mine is a good idea. None of the Commissioners dwelled on the cost to the county of having to improve Johnson Lane sooner. Only one or two even mentioned it. Both attorneys on the Board, Tarkanian and Both attorneys on the board, Tarkanian and Hales, expressed their objections to the threats from the attorneys for Knox, both in tone and words, and said how inappropriate they were. Jim Jackson was given a last opportunity to speak and said, you've been threatened by two different lawyers. Don't cave in. Chairman Rice responded indignantly, saying, this board is not very good at caving. At the end of the day, much to the surprise and disappointment of most of the residents there, the board agreed to continue the matter until the date certain of November 7th, today, to consider if there was a viable compromise that might satisfy the health and safety concerns of the residents. Yet somehow, rather than that date certain of November 7th, the board again took up the matter on October 3rd with a compromise proposal. While compromises can be sometimes an effective way to resolve conflicting views, this so-called compromise seemed to be acceptable to Knox, but not to a single resident with their legitimate concerns about their health and safety. To them, it has certainly appeared that the board did in fact cave to the threats of Knox. At the August 15 meeting, Commissioner Noah Sad, who represents the Johnson Lane area, asked, what price does it cost to make sure that the residents' health and safety are protected? On October 3rd, we got the answer. One half of 1% of Knox's growth sale for a few years, then even less. Most residents would agree that the board, specifically Commissioners Rice, Hales, and Gardner, failed in their duty to protect the health and safety of our residents.
Are there any further public comments?
Chairman, I'd like to-
Yes, sir.
I think Assistant County Manager Scott Morgan should address the Riverview light situation because we've talked about that. And I think that will please at least one person's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarkanian. Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager for Douglas County. Douglas County, just to cut to the chases, authorized and approved the expenditure to acquire, one, a speed monitoring device on Riverview, which were the typical light sign that said, your speed is X. That has been purchased, and we are also procuring two pedestrian crossing signs similar to those that are on Waterloo Lane and other roads in Douglas County. And those are just the pedestrian sign that flashes as manually set off by a pedestrian or in this case, people riding a golf cart. This particular device that we are purchasing will require the golf cart rider to get out of the golf cart and manually activate the signage, which will also encourage the golf court driver and rider to look up and down the street as they are crossing rather than thundering across the road under the guise of pedestrian caution.
Thank you, sir. All right, public comment is closed. Or at least opening public comment is closed. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There are some changes to the agenda in that we are removing items E and I from the consent calendar. And we will cover that when we go to the consent calendar. And are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I need an approval to approve the motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda without consent with the removal of consent agenda items E and I.
Any further comment from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now for the consent calendar. Before we do that, we need approval of the prior minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the prior minutes? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair. I move the approval of the draft minutes of October 3rd, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 3rd, 2024 regular meeting, seeing no further discretion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now for the consent calendar, we have already removed items E and I from the consent calendar. There any anyone want to remove anything from the consent calendar? And move it to the regular agenda. Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the consent calendar minus items A through M minus items E and I.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the administrative agenda. And the first item on the administrative agenda for presentation only ceremonial presentation, the proclamation 2024 Paul dash 118, declaring November 10th through the 16th, 2024 as Nevada Flood Awareness Week in Douglas County. Courtney Walker and me. Greetings. This is Douglas County Board of Commissioners proclamation 2024 Paul dash 118. A proclamation declaring the week of November 10th through the 16th, 2024 as Nevada Flood Awareness Week. Whereas Douglas County recognizes the significant threat flooding poses to residents, the county and our local economy having endured repeated flood events in our watershed on the Carson River, Pineut Creek, Buckeye Creek, Johnson Lane Wash, and Smelter Creek watersheds, including the historic floods of 1955, 1997, 2006, 2014, 2015, 2017, and most recently 2023. And whereas Douglas County is at particular risk of flooding from slow rising riverine flooding in the winter and swift flash flooding in the summer. And whereas during Nevada Flood Awareness Week, local state and federal agencies across the state are working together to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to protect their homes and families from a flood, and plan for recovery. And whereas Nevada Flood Awareness Week 2024 will be held statewide the week of November 10th through the 16th with the theme Nevada Flood, Are You Prepared? And the corresponding website is HTTPS nevadafloods.org. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that Douglas County will participate in Nevada Flood Awareness Week from November 10th through the 16th, 2024, and supports increased public awareness of public threat from floods, encouraging all county residents to act. Adopted this 7th day of November 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners. And thank you for what you do. And the microphone is yours.
Thank you. Courtney Walker for the record. I wanted to take a moment and just invite everyone to the Douglas County Flood Awareness Event. It's next Wednesday, November 13th from 4 to 6 at the Douglas County Community Center. We have several projects that we're going to highlight at that at that event. We have the Carson River Flood Plane Map Revision, which has been going on for about a decade now. It's actually going to be effective in May of 2025. It'll affect several properties within the Carson River Flood Plane, so the heart of the valley essentially. So we'd like to present that information. We also are going to give a capital improvement project update in regards to our stormwater master plan. We have a Pineut Creek Flood Control Project Update. And there'll be several other agencies participating, including FEMA, Division of Water Resources, Carson Water Subconservancy District, et cetera. So it's a great event. If you have any questions about what we have going on here in the county, I encourage you to attend. And if you're unable to, then you can always reach me through the county as well. I also wanted to just take a moment to put Katie Hay on the spot. She's our newest addition to the stormwater team as an engineering technician. And she's been wonderful in getting us organized and on track and being able to provide the best service that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we are.
Three ones.
All right, item number two on the agenda is for presentation only. Presentation of proclamation 2024 P dash 119 to recognize the week of November 4th through the 11th, 2024 in support of Operation Green Light. Georgiana Drays in Westmore. And it'll be presented by Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you indulging me this opportunity. As our representative, the board's representative to the Nevada Association of Counties and also on behalf of the National Association of Counties, this effort is an effort that's being spread across the nation today and this week by the 3,200-plus counties throughout the United States in recognition of veterans throughout our country who have protected and preserved and continue to preserve our freedom as a nation. So I appreciate the opportunity. My it's one thing that's not on my resume is service to our country and our military services. So I particularly appreciate the efforts of my father and my brother and and my sister in their service to our country in that effort. And I'm glad that we have so many veterans show up today. Those I know that we have other veterans here, and I would ask them to also please stand and be recognized. I know Commissioner Wes Rice, Navy. Jim Jackson, Army. No, Marine. I'm sorry, Marine. I, my apologies. I know you treasure that. And Commissioner Noah Sad, US Navy also. So anyways, I'm going to read this proclamation into the record. Proclamation 2024 P dash 119, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans in Douglas County. Whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Douglas County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veterans, service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 42 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas, a lot of whereas is here. Whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Douglas County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved, therefore be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners in observance of Operation Green Light, Douglas County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable well, immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through November 11th, 2024, adopted this 7th day of November, 2024, by the Board of County Commissioners attested to and signed by Wes Rice, Chairman, and attested by Amy Bergens. I'd also like to recognize the fact that many organizations, including the Elks Lodge, which I'm a member of, will be posting flags on all the veterans' grave sites at East Side tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. So I'll be participating in that. But once again, thank you all so much for your service to our country and you also two commissioners.
Good morning. My name is Georgiana Dray Swazmer. I am a Douglas County employee and I am also a veteran. And on behalf of the Carson Valley Veterans, we want to thank Douglas County for participating in Operation Green Light and shedding light on the challenges that veterans face every day. We, Carson Valley Veterans is a group. Some of the members are here. It started as a Facebook page. Just an opportunity for local veterans to come together and build camaraderie and just get to know each other within the community. It has quickly turned into an act of service. There are different meeting groups that happen, support systems. And they've also participated in community service projects for elderly veterans. And so they're the founders of the Facebook page are currently working to build a nonprofit. And so we're looking forward to working with Douglas County in building partnerships so we can continue to serve our local veterans. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Excuse me. All right, we're going to, we have one more for presentation only, which is a presentation from Friends of Service Helping, which is also known as FISH, regarding the services FISH operates throughout the counties. And it'll be Jim Peckham, FISH Executive Director, after which we will take a 10-minute break. And so, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much for providing me with your valuable time. FISH has been around for 49 years and a lot of the services have been modified, but largely it's always been the same initial thought of how can we help people who are in need? Recently, I was visiting with someone down here in Douglas County and I was- Recently, I was visiting with with someone down here in Douglas County and I was was talking with with my board about it and they saw me with a fair amount of food. And they're like, where are you going with this? It's like, we're using it at FISH. And she's kind of looking at me like, your thrift store sells food now? And I had to continue the conversation I've been having for the last fifteen years that we're more than a thrift store. Our thrift stores are strategically positioned on on main roads so that people can take advantage of that and and they help us generate about ten percent of our income. And even more important than that, they provide us a lot of resources that we're able to donate. So when people need coats, when they need, you know, winter gear, the sheriff's department will call us up and say, hey, we arrested this guy in the summer. And they had flip flops and a T-shirt. Can you give them coats and pants and everything else? Down in Coalville, oftentimes when the Marines move in, there's a married couple they put into housing, which the house is empty. And so we'll give them couches and dining room tables and and all the things that they need to to be able to have. And and then they're free to to take that with them. And and certainly, we've we've helped the the local veterans organization to get people into different locations. Sometimes they need hospital beds, sometimes, you know, other furnishings that that are needed. So we do all those sorts of things. As the slide talks about our main focus, the counties are are basically the rural counties. It's Carson Douglas Lion story, a little bit of Churchill. We do not operate a lot in the urban areas of Washoe and Clark. And the frontier areas, what I call the most of the other counties in Nevada just don't have the infrastructure that we're able to to work within. We are a unique nonprofit. We, in my mind, we're unique. We don't rely on the government for funding. In fact, you know, we, our budget's about five-point-three million dollars a year that we raise from within the community, local businesses, individuals, as well as, you know, family foundations and things of that sort that support us. And it gives us a lot more nimble opportunities to be able to work in in the communities that we serve. So that's kind of in a nutshell. I also like to to make people aware that we train med students and nursing students at UNR at our free medical clinic. We train social workers from all kinds of universities and colleges in our social services facilities. And between them and my thirty employees and four-hundred-and-fifty volunteers, we make a big impact in the community. Probably in Carson City, we probably, if they had to do what we do, it would cost them another ten million dollars. The things we do in Douglas County, probably at least five million dollars. And then some of the other counties, you know, a few million here and there. So our goal is to do things efficiently and work and collaborate closely with government agencies and and other nonprofits, not to duplicate services where where appropriate and and again, make an impact. So with that opening remark, we've been around for forty-five years. Our formal name is Friends in Service Helping Emergency Referral Services Program, Inc. So obviously, we go by FISH. It's much easier. And we've also, over time, come up with a way to use FISH as an acronym to talk about what kinds of services we provide and kind of our mission. And so we provide food, instruction, shelter, and healthcare to people in need to help them become more self-sufficient. So that's what where our goal is. We also talk about being a hand up, not a handout. So that people that come to us, they have to have some skin in the game because we know if we're just sitting at the corner handing out twenty-dollar bills, the line never goes away. So we're willing to help people that are willing to help themselves. We refer them to a lot of other agencies, but there's a lot of things that we're able to do as well. This is our most recent report card. Our fiscal year ended June thirtieth. If we include all the Thanksgiving baskets and things of that matter that we hand out and and we'll be handing out here shortly, we're well over half a million meals that we put into the community. Again, we've got a free medical clinic. We provide free medicine, free medical care, predominantly for people chronically ill. Do the training with the with UNR as well there. We, again, chronically ill, we're heart disease, lung disease, diabetes typically are the are the people that that we're dealing with the most. And if those folks are eligible for government benefits for Medicaid or Medicare, then we certainly try and set those up. But if they've got to wait a long time before that they can see their provider, then we'll continue to help them until they can transition. We've got homeless shelters, transitional shelters, and we'll talk a little bit later on about. In fact, we've got now what we call student housing or student apartments. So we, in the different counties, have different needs. In Douglas County, we tend to help a lot more retirees that are having a hard time making their checks stretched for the whole month. Probably half of our budget, about two-point-two, two-point-three million, we spend on food services and helping people to to get through that. We also have free dental services, free eyeglasses with the help of the Lions Clubs. We work with Sertoma, helping them doing their their coat drive now. And they also do some things with audiologists to to be able to assist people. We get artificial limbs for people that are are disabled, wheelchairs, I mean, all kinds of different things. So I like to tell people that we are very multifaceted and most people look at me and think, I thought you were a thrift store. And and we're that too. So ninety-nine percent of our funding is local. And what I mean by that is it comes from the community. We take very little government grants. Again, when I first got there, we we had probably forty percent of our funding was from government grants. And I realized that sometimes we rely on that and then they would change their focus and that money wasn't available. My first example of that was they were always providing, giving us money to help us with our food services. And then a year came up and they said, no, now we're going to put that money toward learning, people learning how to read by third grade. And it's like, well, that's not something we do. And instead of trying to add something that wasn't within our expertise, we just went and found out, found other funding to be able to continue to focus on food, instruction, shelter, and healthcare. So ninety-five cents out of every dollar goes into services. Most of our staff are volunteers. As I think I mentioned earlier, we operate with about four-hundred, about four-hundred-and-fifty volunteers a year. Some of them help in the thrift stores by pricing purses and shoes and and some help us load and unload trucks, some help us with fundraising. Some help us as coaching and counseling as we're working with people to help them to move out of poverty. And again, we collaborate with tons of other organizations. Sometimes other organizations can do some things that we can't do. And they've got some funding for that and that's very helpful. And oftentimes, we've got, we'll make funding available to be able to take care of some of the services that others have a have a need for, but can't figure out a way to 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 fit into to their budgets. So one of the things we do is we try and stay very active in the community and try and find issues that that the community is is dealing with. Back in, I don't know, about twenty-ten or something, we started to see an awful lot of panhandlers. And so we came up with a pretty easy solution, which are called dignity cards. I've got some left over at the door. We've got them in English as well as Spanish. And so if you see somebody in need or panhandling or something else, you give them a dignity card. You can make eye contact as opposed to trying to ignore their stares. Don't give them money. Don't give them food. Send them to us. And we've got a great database that we work with and we share with our partner agencies as well with a release from the client, of course, so that we all understand what's going on in that particular person's life. And in the short run, we can provide them hot meals, showers, housing, all kinds of different things. And oftentimes, when you hand that to somebody, the first thing out of their mouth is, oh, I've been to FISH and they wouldn't help me, which is code for I want your cash, not their services. It's our belief, if you send them to us as a community, we win because we'll be able to track them and help them set goals to to move along. And there's others that say, I hate this region because I can't make any money off these people. They keep giving me business cards. I'm leaving. And if they're leaving with our business cards and not your money, I think as a community, we win there as well. So that's kind of the mentality. Also, oh, probably seven years ago, there was a big issue that there wasn't enough veteran housing, there wasn't enough housing for people with disabilities. So we bought a property and developed a site in Carson City called Richard's Crossing is what we call it now. And it was set up so that we could have the disabled and we could have the veterans make sure that they had a good, safe home. A mistake in my mind that we made and and it was a learning thing for me. We accepted a lot of government funding, which put us under housing first. So the the challenge is there is we had a beautiful computer lab. We built about a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot warehousing space that we were going to teach people how to drywall and and how to do construction projects and small engine repair and appliance repair and computer labs and all kinds of things. And when people moved in, we fell under the housing first, which means you give them housing and then if they voluntarily want to do any of these things, they can. And the response was, I got my vape pen and my skateboard. You gave me a roof over my head. What else do I need? And so now they've just got this empty warehouse space. We end up selling that project to rural housing and I was pleased to to see that they won multiple awards for that. And they assisted us with some of the government financing. So not all is lost, great facility, doing a lot of good things, just not quite the things that that we would typically do. So then more recently, we, oh, there, I'm just getting ahead of myself. So anyway, we do provide a hand up, not a handout. We expect people to to work toward their success and and get, helping themselves get out of poverty. If, I tell my staff, if we're working harder than they are, we're never going to get anyplace. And if you know of anybody that ever wanted to give up tobacco or go on a diet, you nagging them doesn't do much good until they make up their mind that they're going to quit. Or they're going to start an exercise routine or or whatever it might be. It's really dependent on that person making making some decisions. But we've learned that by changing people's behaviors, we can change their life. And that's kind of where our focus is. So more recently, some of the issues that that we've come across is the lack of affordable housing and the lack of a skilled workforce. And so our belief is that instead of building more affordable housing, we should try and figure out how to make fewer people reliant on affordable housing. And we came to that conclusion pretty, pretty easily when we started seeing businesses trying to recruit people from outside the area, including the schools. And those people would come to the area and couldn't find housing. And so they never were able to make a unemployment relationship. So we thought, we got to do something, something a little bit different. And I've never heard of a nonprofit doing what we've done. We've developed what we call, again, student apartments. So it's student living for people who probably should have gone to college but didn't. And and making it so that we can help them with scholarships as well as the cost of their housing. So it moves them out of affordable housing, frees that affordable housing up for others. And then we get them into the education so that they can make, right now, our focus is for them to earn twenty-seven dollars an hour or more when they come out of our program and we'll help them after they graduate and get their degrees and 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 whatnot. So I don't know if you guys have been in Carson recently or in the past, you might recognize the Whistle Stop Inn, built in nineteen thirty-nine. Apparently, it created an awful lot of entrepreneurs. They were selling a lot of stuff there, none of it legal. And, you know, most people remember it as, you know, the the little gazebo with the with this goofy-looking clown in the middle. Some people would say scary clown. So we bought that with the thought that we would move forward with with our student housing. We fixed up a couple of rooms, did a pilot program and learned a couple of things. One, eighty percent of the people that were involved were were single parents. And oddly enough, half of them were single dads, half of them were single moms. I I expected the single moms. I was surprised by the single dads, to be honest with you. And we refined some of our processes. And then we realized one other thing is that when mom and dad were sitting at the kitchen table doing homework, because now they're back in in school, the kids started to sit down and do homework. And we saw on average, kids in elementary and junior high school, their their grade level going up two levels on average. So if they were a C student, they became an A student. If they were getting Ds, they became a B student because they started to understand the value of that education. And probably even more importantly, the parents started to feel like a role model and took on that that obligation that they have with their kids to to teach them what it's like to have to go into school and study hard so that they can bear the fruit, I guess, of 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 that education and and experience and get them out of minimum wage jobs and into to something more successful. So our focus really on trades, technology, and medicine. Though at this point in time, we also decided we'll let some new teachers in because we figure, how are they going to get the education if we don't help the teachers too? So we've got, and again, we're, as a nonprofit, and since we didn't take government funding for for our new facility, we are very much able to to make flexible choices and decisions when when we come across something that made sense and moving teachers in there made a lot of sense because how are they going to be a good student without a teacher? So they're luxury apartments. They all have washers and dryers in the in the units. They, we cover all the utilities. We cover all the internet. They're fully furnished if they want them, but we don't want people to be paying rent on on storage units. So if they want to move their stuff in, we'll pick and choose what of our stuff you want. But everything, you know, pots and pans, dishes, couches, lamps, all those things that are included in there. And we've got twenty HUD vouchers, so a lot of people are able to stay there for free, but they've got to work on their education. They have to be enrolled in a program first before we let them go in. And it's not unlike universities that you get accepted in the university and then you ask about housing. Same thing with us. The difference is we don't kick them out soon as they graduate. We work with them and help them to transition so that they can make it out on on their own. It's right on the beginning is the front or right on Carson Street. Just about a block south of our our main store there in Carson. And much to our surprise, we were planning on building two apartments and Carson City says, well, you need a a commercial building. You say, why, we really don't. We just really want the apartments because that's what feeds into the students. And so, well, we changed the zoning and you need a commercial building. And and it's like, why is that? Said, well, we don't want anybody to see our parking lots. And it's like, have you been to Carson? That's all you see is parking lots. I said, yeah, we don't like it anymore. So you're the first one we're going to make. So we ended up building, adding another five million dollars to the budget. And in the bottom left-hand corner is the the commercial building. It now has some signage on it as well, besides space for rent. So on the bottom floor, we're leasing it out to restaurants. We've got an Asian fusion and sushi restaurant that's going to serve the community from a gentleman who has a restaurant in Monterey and one in Santa Cruz. Then also Genoa Bar and Grill is moving there. And of course, now that they're in Carson, they're going to call themselves Genoa Bar and Grill. I said, aren't you going to confuse people? I said, no, no, they'll just know where to look for us. So on the second floor, we're renting out, I've got forty percent of that rented to is just office space for folks. And then the third floor is the FISH Training Lab or Training Room. And so up there, the students have to also agree that we have access to their grades and whatnot so that we can keep them in line. And also, they agree to attend our training. We've found a lot of employers are saying, hey, the, you know, community colleges and and the trades do a very good job of giving them the technical skills, but we, these people are crappy employees. They don't show up on time. They're always asking for for advances on their payroll. They're argumentative. They all want to be a vice president. You know, it's all these kinds of issues that they try and deal with. So our goal is to try and provide an awful lot of training, including financial management and some other things. provide an awful lot of training, including financial management and some other things to be able to make sure that they have more skills and more and more companies will come to us directly for for their students as opposed to just hiring off the street. It's meant for families. So we've got playgrounds in there. We've got gazebo areas, dog walks, all kinds of things so that the whole family can can come along as somebody's going through the the schools. And that way they've got their support with them. And again, they could be interns, they could be going to community college, they could be working for a HVAC company, they could be working, you know, changing oil at a at one of the auto dealerships, but working toward you know, certification and as a mechanic, those sorts of things. So we're just about there. And with that, we always make sure people know that they can can volunteer. We take donations including stocks and bonds. We found that a lot of people have required withdrawals that they need to make. But if they withdraw, you know, stock worth ten thousand dollars, then they pay taxes on it. They can donate eight thousand dollars to us and and they get an eight thousand dollar write off. But if they move all ten thousand dollars worth of that stock directly to us, they get a ten thousand dollar write off. So they're much better off in that kind of situation. All those different things are available. The next thing that our focus is on is meant is really homelessness because in the two biggest issues that we see that are impacting our community is addiction and mental health. And so we've got a shelter now that we're doing a pilot program that goes from one to three years to help them get through some of those issues. Because that is a a third issue that is kind of kind of hurting our community. Happy to make presentations at other organizations. Always were interested in volunteers. And really the best way to see what we're doing is is to tour our facilities because a presentation isn't enough to to really help you see all the things that we do. And then I just end with, if you're going up Carson Street and you see that mural, that's the site of our our thrift store. And just behind that thrift store is where our administrative offices are and one of our three social work organizations. We have a food bank and 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 social services down in the ranchos, as well as in Dayton and in Carson. And with that, I don't know if there's any questions?
One thing, I I got in here into the county in two thousand and one. And long about two thousand and four, I became aware of fish. But one of the things that what struck me as very, very interesting and beneficial was that people who were going in through a transition period, say from homelessness to et cetera, and they were family people, that you could get them some housing in the Stuart Indian Land?
Yes.
Is that still in effect?
It is, yes. We've got three, four, five, six, I think we have eight facilities out there that we use for emergency housing as well as transitional housing. So we have an emergency men's shelter, emergency women's shelter, and emergency family shelter and transitional houses for people with dependent children to help them move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Peckham, thank you very much for your presentation. I I'm so glad that we were able to provide this type of exposure to your program because I don't know that it gets a lot of exposure in our community. So it's it's certainly a very beneficial service to our community and we appreciate that. My wife and I have made donations for household goods to your program. So anyways, I did not know, when I see this dignity card, I did not know that you had a facility in in the Gardnerville Ranches also. So I don't know that that has gotten a lot of exposure in our community also. But I know that there are
Doors down from from the GID.
Ah, okay. Okay, well, good deal. So and and there are a number of organizations in town that are always looking for guest speakers. And so I would encourage you, I'll I'll take your business card also and and try to spread it around a little bit. But I know that there's always organizations that are looking for guest speakers, and I think this is a great program that you could further explain exactly what your process and program is because it it is a essential service to our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Just briefly, I know that the county provides some overlapping services. And then I wondered if you could just very briefly touch on what is your experience in working alongside the county?
We we refer people back and forth based on some of the things like down in in Douglas County. We haven't taken the time to set up trying to help people fill out paperwork to get some of their government benefits, but certainly the Health and Human Services Department does help with that. They do a lot of the flu clinics where we've got flu clinics that we do in other counties that, you know, we don't have to to rely on that. There are some clients that that we're able to help that the county can't based on what some of the processes they have in place. Again, the food bank, their food closet. I mean, they've got a great program that that goes on. For the most part, I think they're open one or two days a week and we're open five days a week to be able to help. And it's beyond just food. So and we collaborate a fair amount. We have got excess of something or if they've got excess of something, we share. So there is a little overlap there. My original thought when I bought the property in in down off Mitch Street in the ranchos was to put in a family dining room and and Douglas said, no, we don't want you to do that. We're concerned that it might draw more homeless people and and so we did our food bank and social services and we're helping a lot of people who kind of feel isolated in the ranchos. There's much better bus services and some other things, but there's still some people that, you know, venturing into town all two miles or three miles of it is a is a big challenge. So we do a lot of things to help people there. And then, of course, a lot of help in Indian Hills area, which is a lot closer to to our facilities than to to some of the county resources. You didn't say you wanted that brief, did you?
All right, if there's no more questions or comments from the board, thank you very much for your presentation. I hope some found it enlightening. And there's some of us that are well aware of what you do.
Great.
And there are others that have no idea.
Something that I like to to leave people with, if you learn something new and it's really good, spread that rumor. So that people understand. If it's not so good, come talk to me first and we'll see if we can fix it.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And we will now take a ten minute break. Okay, we'll give you about one more minute and then we'll call this meeting back to order.
All right, thank you for coming back to order. And the next two items on the agenda, which are items number four and number five, I'm going to read together. They're on the same issue. And the item number four is for possible action, item number five for presentation only. So after we get done reading all of the information and putting it into the record. And we have our presentation. From Mr. Delair and Mr. Ames, we will take public comment. So for possible action. Discussion to approve a settlement agreement with Rancho's LLC. To resolve two lawsuits filed by Rancho's LLC against Douglas County. arising out of the county's decision to deny Rancho's LLC's applications. To develop a thirty-three point two zero acre parcel located on the northeast corner of Main River. And Dresslerville Roads, APN one two two zero dash one five dash seven zero one dash zero zero one. Pursuant to the settlement, Rancho's LLC will agree to waive any claims for damages. Against the county, including attorney's fees, modify the design of their development. To address concerns raised by the public and the county. And to enhance neighborhood compatibility. And pay sixty thousand dollars towards safety enhancements along Riverview Drive. As a part of the proposed agreement, the county will agree to approve the modified applications. Item number five, which is for presentation only. Introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one six three three. An ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and plan development overlay. District for APN one two two zero dash one five dash seven zero one dash zero zero one. By number one, repealing ordinance number two zero zero two dash one zero two two. Which changed the zoning on the subject parcel from FR nineteen. And I just lost my place. Forest and Range, nineteen acre minimum lot size to SRF eight thousand. Single-family residential, eight thousand square foot minimum lot size. With a PD plan development overlay, PD zero two dash zero six. Because the associated development was never inaugurated. And the tentative map expired. And two, reclassify the same parcel as SFR. Twelve thousand, single-family residential, twelve thousand minimum. Foot, minimum lot size. With a PD plan development overlay. The board may also discuss the associated application for a tentative subdivision map. The subject property is a thirty-three point two zero acre parcel. Located at the northeast corner of Main River and Dresslerville Roads. In the SFR eight thousand PD as a receiving area. The applicant is Rancho's LLC, Keith Serpra. And Sam Loda Landis. And the applicant's representative is Manard Council Consulting. This will be the first reading. Having said all that, Mr. Delair.
Trial.
Thank you Chairman Rice, Tom Delair for the record, Community Development Director. We've got first, I guess we'll just go into item number four before we go and just do the introduction. To the ordinance, but I'll turn the time over to AJ. Who was heavily involved in the in the settlement agreement.
Trial.
Thank you, Tom. And I do have a presentation if we could share the screen. Do I have to share? Yeah.
Trial. Trial. Trial.
Oh, I got you. All right. So as indicated by Chairman Rice, we are talking today about the development that was. Disapproved by this board back in March. All five of you board members were present at those meetings. And the minutes from those meetings are also included in your packet to help refresh your recollection as to what occurred and what was presented. But at those meetings, there was a development that was proposed. So that development was going to be located here. The parcel is in the center of each of these two maps. You'll see the map. In dark orange, the parcel is generally a square shape. And that dark orange designation there shows that the parcel is. The future land use for that parcel is receiving area. The other map on the right shows the current zoning of the parcel, which is SFR eight thousand with a PD overlay. There was some discussion at the original hearing in March about what is receiving area, what is supposed to happen with receiving area. So this excerpt that you see now is from our master plan. This is just copied straight out of the master plan and presented here. As you can see, receiving area is allowed in all base zoning districts. And it just requires either a specific plan or a plan development, which is why this project is being presented in the form of a plan development. Also, the description of receiving area is that it designates parcels within community plans identified for future urban development. So urban development is not a term that's specifically defined in our master plan. It was found in past master plans, but our current master plan does not. Define that to mean anything specific, especially with regard to residential development. However, urban development in residential areas is typically done. At a ratio of two point zero one dwelling units per acre or more. And what that means is that traditionally receiving area once developed will ultimately be zoned either multifamily residential. SFR eight thousand or SFR twelve thousand. So of those three categories, SFR twelve thousand is the least dense residential zoning district associated with receiving area.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? So I asked you this at the at the break because there was some questions from from one of the constituents about this. And I'm a little confused. In the email from our constituent, it said that you could have. As little as two homes per acre, and I think you just said we could have two point one. But then you said, if I'm understanding correctly, that the the lowest density is twelve thousand square feet. So I'm a little confused.
Yeah, there's a sort of a gap in our code. Our code has two. It goes from most dense multifamily residential up to least dense, which would be like a rural residential. Five acre lot. So you go from multifamily residential, which is high density. To SFR eight thousand, which is sort of like a traditional, you know, small lot residential development. SFR twelve thousand, which is what we have, for example, in the Pleasant View development. We have that, there's some SFR twelve thousand, I believe, in the. Rocky Terrace development, and then further into town, we have SFR twelve thousand. In the Windhaven development, for example, just to give you an idea. And then from there, there's not another zoning designation until you get all the way up to SFR one half. Which is two dwelling units per acre. So there's a bit of a gap. Because I believe half an acres, how many square feet is half an acre?
Little over twenty thousand. It's a little over twenty thousand, but.
So there's a bit of a gap between twelve thousand and then that roughly twenty thousand that the half acre.
But my question is, can a receiving area have half acre lots? Because I was under the impression, talking with the staff before that when you designate as a receiving area, they can do up to. They can do up to eight thousand square feet. And I thought we were tied to that unless they agreed otherwise. Do we have the discretion to require or limit to only two homes per acre in the receiving area?
It's, it's a, it's a little bit complicated. Like I said, the master plan doesn't specifically define the term urban development. But if you read through the master plan, there are other areas within it that that talk about what is expected in urban areas. And that talks about. Density is greater than two dwelling units per acre. So that would exclude SFR one half zoning. So traditionally at least, and I think. Well, we'll just stick with that, but traditionally, no, SFR one half zoning districts have not been compatible with receiving area.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I find interesting, and it's probably off the subject, but. As long as we're talking about receiving areas, is my understanding that receiving areas would be. Could allow up to sixteen dwelling units per acre, per acre. Now, obviously, we can't get there because of our height restrictions. In order to get sixteen on an acre dwelling units, it would have to go higher than what our code allows. But so how did? That, that, that adds a whole nother little wrinkle to this whole thing, right? About minimum lot sizes, but.
Right. A receiving area is compatible with multifamily residential, which would be like your traditional apartment complex. So somebody could bring in a project at this exact location for a sort of high-density apartment complex. It's master plan for that.
I'm gonna beat a dead horse, and I don't need to, but I just want to be clear on this. I, it isn't really important to me how much, how, how dense it can be as how less dense it could be. Because we're talking about one of the requirements to be compatible with the neighboring homes and so forth. But what you're saying is if we designate as a receiving area, we have to follow what we think the urban definition is. And that's not totally clear, but traditionally, we've never allowed half acre lots. In receiving areas, the biggest lots have been twelve thousand square feet. Is that what you're saying?
That's accurate.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
And this, this development is sort of a good illustration of how receiving area can sort of move. Between those zoning designations over time. I think I'd get into that maybe in my next slide, but yeah. We'll just move right along. Two thousand and two, there was a project that was approved at this exact same property. And it was a higher-density project. It was SFR eight thousand. Again, with a plan development overlay that's required by our master plan. It had ninety-five lots for single-family homes. They were a bit different than what's being proposed now. They were a little denser. There were alleyways. They were rear-loaded. But that project was never inaugurated. The approvals all expired.
Chairman, is it okay if I keep asking why he's going through this?
As long as the dead horse you're beating doesn't get up and run away.
Yeah, no, no, this is not going to, this is the topic, and I'll try to be quick, and I don't want to interrupt you too much. But I'm just trying to feel, follow the compatibility with the neighborhoods. Were those half acre lot, well, basically they're acre lots, acre and half lots. Were they there when this was approved in two thousand and two, or they built after the approval in two thousand and two?
The one acre lots to the north predate most of the development in that area. The SFR one-half lots, I believe, were also there, but I don't know when those were developed. I don't know.
Okay. No, Tom Delair for the record, I, I believe those were there in the ranches. That was the first section of the Rancho's park and the, in the west side of Dresslerville Road had half-acre parcels. And the, and the east side had one acre or larger, actually larger than that. But a lot of the lots were one acre in size there.
So yes, those lots were, were in existence at the time the project was approved in two thousand and two. But like I said, that project sort of died. It expired, went away. Nevertheless, the zoning designation stands, which is a little confusing. Because it's associated with the plan development, which is coupled with a development plan and a development schedule, all of which are expired. So developing it. Is a little complicated at this point, unless the county were to go back and revoke that old zoning designation, which never occurred. So what, what happened recently is Rancho's presented a new project for this area. Because the old development plan was expired, they created a new development plan that is actually less dense than what had previously been approved. In addition, they offered to downzone it to SFR twelve thousand, which again traditionally. Is the lowest-density zoning designation for receiving area. Their initial plan proposed eighty-five lots for single-family homes. And the following slide shows you, this is what they presented earlier this year. This is what you saw back in March. This is shows the eighty-five residential lots. You can also see that surrounding the development was a proposed open space or buffer zone, as we referred to it. That area served not only to provide a buffer between the new neighborhood and the existing neighborhoods. But it would also allow for the installation of a public trail. It would create areas for floodwater mitigation and retention. And. Provide for open space. You'll recall that some different housing designs were presented to you back in March. This is just to help again refresh your recollection. These were some of the designs that are associated with this project. These will not be alley-loaded or rear-loaded parcels. They'll generally look as they do in these photos here. So. These, or this project was presented first to the Planning Commission. They, they recommended approval. It was then presented to the board. That hearing occurred on March seventh. And I think the board generally expressed appreciation for the design. There were comments from all board members that the project was a good project, that they, that they liked. The layout and other aspects of it. However, there were two primary concerns voiced, voiced by some of the commissioners at that meeting. The first was impact on the safety of Riverview Drive. And there was a lot of discussion specifically, and we've already heard some discussion today. About Riverview Drive and especially near the golf course, how that can be an unsafe road. And the traffic in that area, traffic studies show isn't necessarily bad for a standard road. However, Riverview Drive is unique in that it doesn't have any sidewalks, for example. It has a lot of curves. There are trees, there are poor sightlines. And there's a lot of use by that road, not just by cars, but pedestrians. There's even some bicyclists and others that use it to access the commercial corridor along three ninety-five. Golf courts that cross and travel along the road. And so there's. Aspects of the road that make it unique. And so because of those unique characteristics, this board expressed some concern. That this new development would. Make it less safe to travel Riverview Drive. There was also concern about the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. And specific mention was made about the SFR one neighborhood or the one acre lots to the north. So I'll talk, we already talked a little bit about it, but here's just a picture. This is Riverview Drive. This is just a Google map, you know, street view. But this is just to give you an idea of the section of road that we were talking about back in March. You'll see a large portion of the golf course there on the right, the clubhouse is on the left. This is heading west on Riverview Drive, away from three ninety-five toward the Rancho's. AJ?
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission actually heard this item on January ninth, twenty twenty-four. And the March seventh, on your last slide was from this board meeting. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's clarified on the record.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, if that wasn't clear, this, when we're talking about the March meeting and all of this information, this is from that March meeting of this board. So ultimately, then that was a, a big concern, and that was discussed at length during the meeting. In the original project, there was some payments that were going to be made to improve the intersection of Riverview Drive and US Highway three ninety-five. It was a forty-five thousand dollar payment. It was going to be made toward future intersection enhancements, but nothing to enhance the safety of Riverview Drive closer to the golf course. There were also some concerns, as I noted before, about neighborhood compatibility. We've already talked a little bit about zoning. This is sort of a pulled-back view of the, of the Gardnerville Ranches area. The area in red there, highlighted in red, that is the project site. You can see the current zoning, which is SFR eight thousand. That is with the PD overlay. The SFR one zoning to the north and SFR one-half zoning to the west. You will notice that the SFR one-half area is surrounded on all sides by other types of developments. There's SFR twelve thousand further west. There's multifamily residential development along Tillman Lane, as well as to the south of that development. And then there is SFR twelve thousand. And then as you go further south into the ranches, it becomes SFR eight thousand. So the concern was that the homes to be constructed at the project site would not be compatible with those homes closest to the project, especially those that actually share a border with the project along the northern boundary. There are eight homes along the northern boundary of the project, each of which is zoned SFR one. And so those are all one-acre lots or larger. Ultimately, the concerns with neighborhood compatibility and, and the safety of Riverview Drive caused this board to vote three-two to deny the project.
You said there's eight homes to the north side? I'm counting eleven if.
No, no, eight, eight homes here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, there's eight homes that share a, a boundary, basically, with the project site. So, based on the denial, developer quickly filed two lawsuits. Our code requires developers to go through this process. A developer doesn't have time, following the denial, to sit down and try to hash out issues or to try to work through differences. It's, it's a pretty quick timeline, and so developers, following denial, have to pretty much focus immediately on getting those lawsuits filed. So that's what occurred here shortly after the denial. There were two lawsuits filed by the developer. The first was a petition for judicial review, seeking the court's review of this board's decision, and the second was a complaint for damages. Specifically, the developer was seeking damages associated with the denial. So those cases are both still pending. They've been now fully briefed, and we're just waiting on the court's ruling. The petition for judicial review was fully briefed by July. So I know this was denied in March, but the court goes slowly. And that is when, that is when everything was fully briefed. Now, with the complaint for damages action, that one has actually been moving even a little bit slower. Our most recent filing in that case occurred in September, and that's sort of what set off the most recent settlement discussions. If the county were to lose, they are linked. So if the county were to, if the petition for judicial review were approved, then it, it's highly likely that the court would also grant or award damages in that other action. So the potential liability to the county, if we were to lose both lawsuits, would be, ultimately, the court would order that the development be approved, and that approval would be without any type of concessions or changes to the design. That would be approval as it was presented back in March. And then in addition, there would be damages. The damages in this case would be the cost resulting from the denial, which could possibly include carrying costs for that property over the past months, many attorney's fees incurred or other losses associated with the delay. So, as I indicated, in about September of this year, I met with counsel for Ranchos LLC, which is the developer. And the reason that we met is because we were discussing a case conference report, which had to be filed at that time. And so in September, we met, we discussed, and we brought up again the idea of a settlement. And so that's what sort of got the ball rolling towards a settlement in this matter. We, in communicating and talking about ways to ultimately resolve the lawsuit, we found some common ground. Over the next month or so, I, with Doug Ritchie, met with, or worked under the direction of the county manager's office and also the board to negotiate with the ranches. And ultimately, we were able to prepare the settlement agreement that's being presented to you today for your consideration. So, the first important aspect of this settlement agreement is that there is now a redesign to the project that will, well, I, I wouldn't necessarily call it a redesign, but it's a payment. A payment that will be made to help enhance the safety of Riverview Drive. Recall that this was not a part of the original plan. It was only going to be a forty-five thousand dollar payment to enhance the safety at three ninety-five. This would be specifically dedicated to be used to enhance Riverview Drive's safety at the golf course. The sixty thousand dollar number is something that the county actually came up with. One of the ideas to improve safety on Riverview Drive is to re-stripe it, essentially remove the center turn lane that is currently on Riverview Drive. I can kind of go back maybe to that picture. This is just an idea, but one idea was to remove the center turn lane so that there would be one westbound and one eastbound lane, and then use all of that space on the northern side, which is the, the right side of the picture, as a designated area for pedestrians, golf carts, bicycles, et cetera. This would help create a specific space for people to travel so that they're not having to compete for space with vehicles traveling on the road. Other ideas that the county is already working on were mentioned earlier in this meeting, including new signage, lights and things to enhance safety in the crossings. Now, this is just an idea, but the cost of this idea to implement, including re-slurrying the road and then re-striping, was approximately sixty thousand dollars. So we asked the ranches if they, or Ranchos LLC, I should say, not the ranches, if they would be willing to pay for that, and they agreed that they would. I think they saw value to the community in enhancing the safety of Riverview Drive in that area. Now, the county isn't obligated to implement that design. The county can use those funds to implement other solutions if other solutions present themselves and they appear to be better. All right, they're more likely to enhance safety. The county is just obligated to spend that money for safety, and we have to do it within a reasonable time period. So, again, if, if we wanted to add more signals, barrier walls, even an overpass, if we feeling ambitious for golf carts, we could use that sixty thousand dollars towards those improvements. The, the settlement also seeks to enhance neighborhood compatibility, and it does that in a number of ways. So, first of all, development will remain SFR twelve thousand, which doesn't sound like a benefit, but it actually, as we've already discussed, prevents someone from subsequently coming in and developing this with a higher-density project, like an SFR eight thousand, a multifamily residential, or even a commercial project. All right, SFR twelve thousand is the lowest density for traditionally urban use. Other means of en- enhancing neighborhood compatibility include an increase to the lot sizes along that northern boundary. So that's a one thousand three hundred twenty-two foot, roughly, boundary, and there are eight homes abutting that boundary. And actually, the number of homes that would now be on that northern boundary is reduced down to just thirteen. So that is actually consistent with the nearby SFR one-half zoning districts. If you took a measuring tape and you went along the back property lines of, of the SFR twelve thousand, or, excuse me, SFR one-half district across the street, one thousand three hundred twenty-two feet covers thirteen SFR one-half homes. So the number of homes on the northern boundary is the same as what you would get in an SFR one-half district.
I appreciate that because that's one of the big issues, but you, you should at least acknowledge that you're counting the buffer area as part of those to, to get to the half acres.
The, but, well, yeah, so it's the total number of houses. So there is a buffer area on the west side of the westernmost house, but that factors in. So there's, that boundary line, that thirteen hundred square feet, there's only going to be thirteen homes there. And if you were to just do SFR one-half zoning along that entire top boundary, that's how many homes you would get. Assuming your, your lot sizes are consistent with what we already see in the ranches. Also, it does maintain that buffer zone, which is actually a benefit because it does increase the distance between the existing houses and the new houses. It also provides an area that cannot be developed. If somebody's property line went all the way back to the SFR one property lines, they could put a shed back there. They could do an accessory dwelling. They could do any number of things. The buffer zone prevents development, so it actually increases the space. It also allows for the other benefits to remain, including the walking trail, the open space, and the detention ponds for the floodwater. Beyond neighborhood compatibility and safety enhancements to Riverview Drive, there are other benefits associated with this settlement agreement. First, this is approval, and it is with these changes. So I, this sounds repetitive. I've already mentioned this, but if we were to lose the lawsuit and this were kicked back to the board, it would be approved as presented back then. So by approving the settlement, you are getting the development that was proposed, but with the concessions that this board sought and wanted at the time. Additionally, we avoid the risk of having to pay any damages, including any attorney's fees. And then there are other benefits associated with the original projects that are all still present. Again, the open space, the flood mitigation, and that's flood mitigation, by the way, that the county doesn't have to pay for, or the, the Ranchos GID, the conditions of approval for this project require the creation of an HOA, and that is the entity that will be responsible for maintaining that drainage area. And finally, Ranchers is still paying forty-five thousand dollars towards the Riverview three ninety-five intersection improvements. So that is a synopsis of the settlement agreement. It is found entirely, in its entirety, I should say, on page three oh five of your packet. If you have any questions about specific terms, we can get into that now. But I think now would be a good time. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
I just have a few follow-up questions. First of all, what, we, I, we have a letter from Mr. Sheridan. He sent it to all the commissioners. And in that letter, he has emphasized that the Ranchos GID, their water approval for this project has lapsed, and they have to come back before the, the Ranchos GID to get that approved again. How does that affect us if we approve this project before the water is allocated by the GR, GID? Doesn't seem like that works. Seems like we have to wait till the approval's done first, and then, and then we would vote on this issue.
Yeah, thank you for the question. There is already a condition of approval that was included with the prior development, which is still applicable. So they are unable to develop unless they obtain water service. So the only water service in that area is the Gardnerville Ranches GID service.
So the timing of it doesn't matter. It's, it's, if we do it, if we do the approval before they approve it, it doesn't really affect what the conditions are?
Not, not in a, not in any real significant sense. Ideally, they would go to the, the GID first, which they did originally when this was originally brought forward. And the reason we like them to go to the GID first is because then they'll issue a will-serv letter, and it will be coupled with conditions. So that's exactly what happened in this case. They were issued a will-serv, will-serv letter. And then some of the conditions that were imposed were, for example, they aren't planting grass around the exterior of the development because that can be a waste of water. They're doing zero escaping. So ideally, we'd like to see those conditions before final approval. But in this case, it's, it's not a significant issue because they will ultimately have to get, excuse me, they will ultimately have to get water service before they're allowed to develop.
I, I had two questions, but if you wanted to ask me a specific one.
I just, just to be absurdly detailed. Since they don't have a will-serv letter, one of the conditions is they have to get water service. So they will have to, regardless, i- if we approve this, they will have to go back to Gardnerville Ranches to get water service.
Yes.
And Gardnerville Ranches can say no if they have the grounds to say no. It's because we had a constituent say we have no water. So if for some reason they had information in that regard, they could take that step.
They could.
Thanks.
Two follow-up questions, both, both pertain to the letter that we received, the email we received from Mr. Sheridan. The other thing he talked about was the timing of this agenda item, inferring that a couple of people on the board were running for reelections. And we voted against the project, and now that it's over, we have to make that vote again. Can you tell us why? I mean, first of all, I, I had no control over the timing on it. I don't know about Mr. Garner, but I would think this was something done with county staff. Can you just address that?
Yeah, no, definitely. I, I already kind of alluded to it a little bit in the presentation, but this is, this settlement is a, is a result of, of the legal proceedings that are ongoing. There's still no resolution to either of the two lawsuits that were filed against the county. And specifically, this discussion about settlement started in September, and it started when I met with counsel for Ranchos LLC. So that was initiated by staff, essentially. It was at that time that staff determined there, there did seem to be the possibility of settlement. And so that's when we sought guidance from the board, from the county manager, looking for what exactly, what, what concerns we should try to address. And then we commenced negotiations, and, and negotiations were ongoing into October. So this is sort of a natural timeline, I think, when you're dealing with courts and just the speed of filings and, and all of that.
Okay, and the final question, this is something that I spoke with Mr. Sheridan about. Oh, yes, it is. I got, I got listed right here.
Just kidding.
Unless you guys bring up something, I want to ask something after that. But the, the, he had suggested, when we talked about a general plan of, in, in all developments, about impact fees to help either maintain or, or create additional road access. He asked why we had not asked for more of an impact fee on this development because one of the main concerns that I've had has been the impact or the Riverview and the, and the safety issue there. I want to, before you even answered, I want to say, I really like the fact, the suggestions that the county's talking about taking to make their road a lot safer. I appreciate the fact that you, for the first time, I've heard somebody in the county staff acknowledge that this is a unique road because of the way it's curved and, and, and the golf carts and so forth. And I think some of the ideas that you had mentioned is going to really help that out, particularly with respect to the golf carts and the other, other paths. But could we even have imposed an impact fee in this development this late in the game? That's my question.
Well, imposing one, I mean, we could have imposed one back in March at this point in time because it's part of the settlement, and that's not one of the negotiated terms. I guess it's, it's sort of off the table, but the reason why we didn't push for it at all in March, or even in our most recent negotiations with the developer, there's, there's a number of them. So first of all, the county used to impose impact fees more often, and frequently, the imposition of impact fees led to further litigation. So just as a policy decision, I think the county moved away from that. Instead, we try to achieve those same objectives that you would achieve through conditions of approval. So we still, we still try to get the benefits of those fees without actually imposing them. Another limitation on impact fees is, NRS actually puts a lot of requirements on their use. I don't recall specifically what the timeframe is, but there's a, there's a short timeframe during which the county has to actually spend that money. And if we don't spend the money, then we have to return the impact fees. Now, spending the money seems easy, but usually, the impact fees don't cover the full cost of a project. And so that, unless the county is going to be developing more rapidly, it doesn't actually make a lot of sense to seek impact fees because by the time we're actually ready to spend them, it's already past their expiration date, so to speak, and they've been returned to the developer. So just from a practical perspective, it hasn't proven to be beneficial to impose impact fees.
Just a follow-up to that, sorry, Tom Delaire, for the record. The, we did, we are collecting the forty-five thousand dollar impact fee to the intersection of, of Riverview and three ninety-five. We also have, besides this project moving forward, this is something John Urban and I have put together. We do have. Put together, we do have a consultant actually analyzing that sub that. Uh, intersection further uh for our our next step in the transportation plan update. And so we are looking at that based on the brand new model that was just generated for the Carson Valley, Carson City, and. Up into Lyon County and Reno, and so we are analyzing that, the the intersection. Uh, and the current, this particular intersection in the current transportation plan was supposed to be approve in improved. In, I believe, twenty twenty five, um, but the conditions that. The assumptions were under that transportation plan that was developed in two thousand seventeen. Um, haven't been met yet, we haven't increased, none of the development in the ranches have happened, so so it isn't justified to do those improvements. At this time, and so uh that's what we're having done by this consultant is to figure out exactly how many cars can turn left off of that. Um, that movement, so we have a better idea of when the triggers happen, which will hopefully in turn. Uh, figure out a better way to calculate our impact fees than what we do today, and the transportation engineer does do the impact fee calculation. Um, and then staff approves it. Just, just.
And and A.J. Hames again for the record, I did, I did note that impact fees have a timeframe, of course, there is a timeframe. For the fee that we are. Obtaining here for the improvements to River View Drive. And that's found in the settlement agreements. I'm trying to remember specifically what they were. Uh, so Ranchers will make that payment in full to the county prior to recording their final map for phase one, and then the county has. Two years to use those for improvements to River View Drive. I did speak with John Herb. To see kind of what what would be the timeframe if we wanted to implement, say, the the restriping. Of River View, and he said that six months would be probably more than adequate. So two years should be ample time, this isn't going to be, like a lot of impact fees are for the construction of something new. Um, and so that's where we run into to trouble with timeframes. But in this case, River View Drive exists and the problems there exist today, so. Um, some of the common. Concerns about timeframes and impact fees. Aren't necessarily. Present for this development, but just. It's just something to keep in mind generally when thinking about impact fees.
Going back to where you referred to lawsuits. Based on impact fees that the county. Imposed. I'm assuming you mean unsuccessful. Lawsuits? Don't know, okay. Okay. A related question, are we constrained from requiring impact fees over and above what we can tie to what the impact will actually be?
Yes, yes.
We have to have a. Grounds for saying the impact fee would be X and the X is tied into what the impact will be.
Yeah, I mean, it's an impact fee, and I think the forty five thousand dollar fee in this case, uh, that's being paid towards River View Drive in three ninety five is a good example. They do an analysis to see what this new development, what the impact it will have on that intersection. They find that because it will eventually, I think, within twenty years, push that intersection into a a category where it is no longer. Um, serving its purpose, they figure out the. The amount of that impact from this specific project, and then they apply that to the total cost. That it will require to actually make those intersection improvements, so yeah, impact fee is tied specifically. To um. The actual impact from the development.
Tarkanian.
Oh, I was gonna ask follow up on the her question, so with this is a problem I have with how you calculate the impact fees. And this is what happened on Johnson Lane, that you, it seems like we calculated based upon this development is going to create this amount more traffic. And then they're going to use that percentage of the entire traffic. To determine the cost, even though. Because of this additional. Amount of traffic, Johnson Lane, the heavy duty trucks here, the additional number of of cars coming. You're creating, you now, because of that, you're creating a need. To build or revise these roads only because of this additional traffic. It's not because all the other traffic was already there, so I don't, I don't know if this is an NRS requirement, or this is a Douglas County code requirement. But if we're going to approve new developments, they're going to require significant improvements to the road, those developments should pay the entire cost, that's significant development. Not a percentage cost of it, is it an NRS or is it Douglas County one?
That's an NRS requirement, um, but I I think it, that's a good point, and I think it it shows why. In this case, what we've been able to negotiate by way of the settlement agreement is so. Uh, beneficial to the county, I think Ranchers has has done a good job of trying to really. Uh, take care of, or excuse me, Ranchers LLC has done a good job of of trying to take into account the county's concerns, the public's concerns, commissioners' concerns. And so they're agreeing to pay the full cost of. Uh, one project that was thought up to fix the issues at River View Drive, so that is one hundred percent essentially what they're agreeing to pay in this instance.
Tom Delair for the record, um, just to follow up on that, Commissioner Tarkanian, uh. If you have an intersection that has four hundred cars turning left on it, and then the new development comes in and only produces twenty. Left turn movements in that hour that the four hundred already are on there, that's the impact, that's the only way we can calculate the impact, the road should have been designed. Based on our county standards at the time of when the when that road was constructed, and so it has a service life of twenty years, which. We should be replacing roads every twenty years in order for the service life to be met, and we don't do that, right, so the road ends up being forty years old. And and deteriorated, of of course.
Me and you are going to have a a beer and talk about that, because I'm going to disagree.
Yeah, okay, well.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions by the board? Saying none.
We can now, I think, transition into, this, it's not really any additional presentation that we have for item five, that's the first reading of the ordinance. The information in your packet is there, it's essentially the same as what was presented to you back in March, so. You can take that into consideration, uh, the staff report was updated with some dates and things like that. I did want to note too that the ordinance was actually updated. And so. It. For the sake of, you know, clarity and transparency going forward. That ordinance. I'd like to just amend it on the record today, the number. So that would, that would be ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen thirty three A. And um, I'd like, I'd just like to make that amendment now. And we will continue to refer to it. As sixteen thirty three A going forward, just to create a nice clear record for the public as to what. Was approved now versus what was denied in March, so. We'll make that rec- or make that record today, and then just going forward. Sixteen thirty three A is the ordinance uh. That we would, we would ask you to uh to consider.
Thank you, I already read the uh proposed ordinance into the. Uh, record and I would uh. And we'll take note that the we have added the addendum of A.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Uh, since we combine these two. Items together, uh, we will go ahead and take public comment. The public comment is now open.
You're gonna have to.
John Sheridan for the record, I would like to respectfully request uh added minute from the chairman, if I could, just to bring up the um. Clay, the kind of clear the gray area for Mr. Tarkanian, and as Sam indicated, the twelve thousand square foot. Density for receiving area is. Is the most likely lowest density when you start to include. The things that are required for a planned development such as open space and that, so um, I get receiving area does allow for. Two units per acre. But that would not include any open space within that planned development, it would just include a road to those homes, so I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you. So um, the first request I want to make is that this project would. I get this is for presentation only, this project would come back before the grid for a a will serve. Um, I don't see a a problem with. The county commissioners approving it and it coming back before the grid in between. But I would respectfully request that this project does come back before the grid. And then I want to um touch on. The idea of impact fees. Um, Commissioner Hales, I know I hammer you a lot, but um, and and so. Um, from the standpoint of um, from this podium, um, and putting you on blast kind of, but. When you just mentioned that the lawsuits were lost and and we don't, you know, and we can't. Charge impact fees beyond what we're. We're doing. The lawsuits are lost because they're very arbitrary, and as you heard Sam just state. One of the projects that was just thought up was this project. We don't have a master plan, we have a Douglas County master plan on paper. But we don't have a Douglas County master plan for the individual communities. That are zoned for growth. We need to start there with a master plan of the individual communities and the county roads that serve those communities and the impacts on those. Then, once we have a master plan and we have signed present worth cost analysis to that. The county can then can create an impact fees committee. And as I've indicated in my letter to you guys, the planning commission can take that up. As long as somebody from the business community or somebody is on there. But once we have a leg to stand on and we actually have a master plan, then things don't become so arbitrary, and we wouldn't lose the lawsuits in court. So we need to do pl- better planning upfront for the communities, and I think. That starts with the master plan creation, not just broadly for transportation across Douglas County. But individually for each community, the creation of an impact fees committee. And then we start to hold. The developers accountable, and we might have a leg to stand on in court, thank you.
James McCallum for the record, I am the uh chairman of the Gardnerville Ranchos Board of Trustees, I'm not here in that capacity. It is the issue, and I'm not going to rehash the issues, we've already talked about compatibility and and safety on River View. Long term is this, this. Property owner owns a huge amount of property. That is designated as a receiving area. So the long term. Maybe building two thousand homes. But you're always going to see it in small packages, so you don't see the real impact on the community. That if he presented those two thousand homes at one time, then you would be looking at it going. Well, you're going to have to redesign the bridge or build another bridge. Because that would, you know, if you assume it's almost four people per house. And the Ranchos two thousand homes is eight thousand more people, it's. You know, it's four thousand more cars. But you're not getting the full impact because you're always going to see it as eighty five homes. And then you're going to be told, well, there's not that much impact. And you're going to be told, of course, if you deny it, it's going to be legal action, so you don't get the full impact. Of what the development of this receiving area. Would really, would really do, so you're never going to get the money to build the infrastructure. For this area. Because everything's going to be in small increments. And I think that's the problem. You know, the, I don't know, it was back in the nineties, and this was all declared to be receiving area. Is if it was easy for people living in other parts of the county, you say, well, put the development in the ranches, that made it easy. But the ranches we have. Without even talking about water, which is, and I'm trying not to talk about board issues. But uh with the issues of transportation, of being able to to get from one place to another, you're not able to see. The whole impact because you're always going to see it one development at a time. And if you say no, or you impose development fees, that's going to be uh litigious. But the problem is, we're not seeing the impact of developing this entire area, which would substantially increase the population in the ranches. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman Brad Johnston, I'm legal counsel to Ranchers LLC and the two pending lawsuits. I don't really have much more to add, I do want to thank Mr. Hames and Mr. Ritchie for the work that uh we did to come up with this settlement agreement. I would reiterate what Mr. Hames said and a and a couple of points. Once this application was denied, we're on a very short timeline under Nevada law to file a petition for judicial review. We're also on a very short timeline to file the separate lawsuit. Uh, for monetary damages, and why that is, uh, and why two separate lawsuits, that's just what the Nevada Supreme Court said we have to do. So we did that. There is a lot of work that then goes into that issue, we have to compile the administrative record, we file briefs and the petition for judicial review action, and that's a zero sum game. We win. And the county loses, or the county wins and and we lose, the judge will not be saying. Okay, well, I'm going to remand it back to the county, but have Ranchers do the following things. That's why settlement is advantageous, it ends both lawsuits, it gets a result. That we can't get out of the lawsuit, and that's why the two compromise points, as we understood the concerns of the commission. It was compatibility with neighbors to the north, which was why we removed the one lot. Have the buffer zone to make it more compatible and address that concern and the agreement to pay the sixty five thousand dollars for improvements on River View. As traffic was an expressed concern. It was a compromise, it was a a discussion that came from the district attorney's office. We hope that you approve this settlement, if it's not approved, we go back to the courts and we let the courts decide. The problem with that is any decision is not necessarily final, because then we look at eighteen months to two years on appeal to the Nevada Supreme Court. Or if it goes to the Court of Appeals, which we don't want, so this is an advantageous resolution for all parties. That in our mind, addressed the concerns that were expressed by those who voted against the project originally. This is a win win for both sides, we ask that you approve this settlement agreement, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Saying none, I will bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to say. The um statements made by Mr. McCallum. Are exactly what I was commenting on and voted against the project to begin with, I came in and. Listening, reading the pamphlet last time, seeing the project, liking what the project had, but my concern is a long term impact. That all of that receiving area is going to have. With the with the with the road out there, with just right now, that the way uh River View is. I've talked to county staff, we we we, over and over again, we gotta get a a a solution to the road problems. Uh, we need to find a solution, we're discussing ideas. Hopefully, this will take care of future developments, to what would the solution will be, and and that's one reason why I I really like what the settlement is with respect to the roads, because I think in the long term. We won't be coming back on small parcels and voting for just a little bit of a change, we have to have a. A major impact on how we're going to handle the roads, particularly in the Ranchos area, going out to the three ninety five from that area, second of all. With respect to the improvements to review, there's only sixty thousand dollars, that's not very much money, but the impact of, but the but it is the cost of what the county felt. These changes would be, and I think, and I went through the changes with the county staff, and I've been talking about. Uh, the road problems of River View from the time I've been on the board, and I really like the changes they're talking about, I think it's going to slow down traffic. I think it's going to provide safety for the golf cart riders, the people walking, the bicyclists. I I think it's going to be a win win across the board, and the fact it only costs sixty thousand shouldn't be a reason why you vote against it if it's going to solve the problems. The problem I have with this agreement, I talked with Mr. Haines about it before, and the county, and I've actually, I've talked with the uh the applicants. I would like to have seen a better compatibility between here and uh the northern border, I wish we could make those lots a little bit bigger, I do understand the buffer zone. And and how that's going to create basically a larger area before you get to the smaller lots, I understand all those things. It'd been nice if we could have got a little bit of a bigger area, I appreciate the fact the applicants reduced one of the homes, which, you know, spotted more than sixty thousand uh dollars. I wish there's more we can do, but there are other ways we may be able to solve that problem, I've talked with one of the homeowners on the north side that. That maybe there's a better solution, so I like the 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 settlement, I appreciate uh this going forward, I guess. Anyway, so I like it, I'm going to go for it.
Any other, yes, sir.
Any other? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I um, I appreciate what uh, Mr. Sheridan brings to us. Um, and we've discussed this uh, personally uh, over the last couple of weeks when this uh, looked like it was coming forward. And I don't disagree with his indication that we need a, we need, you know, when our master plan was built originally, well, not originally, but one of, you know, huge master plan update was, I believe, in 1996. I believe that's when the receiving area concept came into into existence. And uh, I don't disagree with the fact that maybe we need to take a look at uh, those future issues uh, as our as our community has grown out over the last 30, 25 years. Um, however, uh, that's something that that we need to take a look at in the future uh, as we as we look into next year uh, with with the possible update of our master plan. So um, you know, it what we're left with here is is what I see almost is the lesser evil of of two plans, really. When we uh, we recognized and can express concerns back in March, our primary concerns that I expressed and other commissioners expressed at that time were obviously the the increase in traffic on Riverview and and that unsafe corridor there and what this project might add to that. But also uh, and the density question. And so we raised those two questions, and I think that that was perhaps the primary reasons why we went ahead and and denied that project at that time. I appreciate the fact that the Ranchers LLC has has also looked into those two issues and and addressed those. And so, and that's what probably, or that's what has inspired this this development agreement. So um, anyways, uh, I I did express uh, as Mr. Haynes uh, pointed out, uh, the appearance of the project, the elevations of the project, the open space of the project, uh, the buffer zones, the residence amenities, walking and hiking trails around it, uh, flood mitigation uh, on the north end and and the HOA. So I I think that um, uh, the the uh, risks of of not approving this uh, is we go back to uh, the zoning of 8,000 square foot, um, which allows as small as 5,000 square foot lots and and certainly that's distasteful. So I I don't know that we really have too many options here. So.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the board? If not, okay, uh, go ahead.
Couple of quick comments. Um, I, this is better for the county than what we had in front of us in March. And so I'm grateful for that. I um, appreciate my, the work of my fellow commissioners and very much appreciate the developers' willingness to um, have discussions and are really great legal counsel. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and.
Wait. And Tom.
Okay.
And Tom and his uh.
Is it my turn? Thank you. I want I want to thank you uh, for the work that you've put in. I want to thank uh, the uh, Ranchers LLC for coming to the table and and resolving most, if not all, of the concerns that we had with this project. Uh, in my opinion, you've been more than reasonable. And and I just thank everybody involved for bringing us to this point. And having said that, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release of claims with Ranchers LLC as presented.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We've already had public comment. I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. And we'll move on to item number six.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I was going to recommend, uh, I know it's uh, 1235, um, but we only have really uh, three more items. Well, one uh, possible action and presentation only and in the public comment. So I would hope that maybe we would agree to power through this and and go to lunch perhaps afterwards.
I just need five minutes.
All right, we will take a 10-minute break.
At your age, I wish you had the same problems.
Take a 10-minute break and we will be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. All right, now that I've been corrected on my pronunciation of a certain last name, we will move on to item number six. And this is for possible action. Discussion to adopt ordinance 2024-1640 in ordinance amending Douglas County Code Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.36, Adult Characterized Businesses, to one amend section 536.010, Definitions subsection H, Adult Review. To clarify that in a adult review, as defined under the Douglas County Code, must be owned, managed and controlled by an unlimited gaming licensee and must occur within an established and designated showroom or showrooms owned, managed or controlled by an unlimited gaming license. Number two, add section 5.36.160, Injunctive Relief. To clarify that any violation of chapter 5.36 is subject to a civil action by Douglas County for preliminary and permanent injunctive relief to enjoin the violation. And three, provide for all other property properly related manners. This is the second reading. Zach Wadley, did I do it right this time?
You did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zach Wadley.
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, I just, there was a word that was mispronounced and I I just wanted to make sure that it gets into the record. When you first said um, own, managed, and you said and controlled, I believe, and the word should be or controlled. I think that that's a very important nuance. So.
Thank you, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney. And and Mr. Gardner is correct with with that reading. That's what is reproduced in the agenda. Um, that lengthy title really says it all with respect to to what this ordinance does, so I won't belabor the point. Um, the ordinance was introduced by this board back in July. Uh, we went through the business impact statement processes required to do under Nevada law. You heard that um, item at your last meeting where no substantial business impact state, business impact was found with respect to the ordinance. Um, and I'm available for any questions at this point. Thank you.
All right, since this is the second reading of this ordinance, any questions from the board? Saying none. This is for possible action. I will open this item for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Saying none. I will bring it back to the board and I will move that we adopt ordinance 2024-1640 as presented, based upon public comment, the results of the business impact statement outreach efforts and the discussion of the county commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. If there's no further comment, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. I think that that's a very important nuance, so.
Thank you for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney. And, and Mr. Gardner is correct with, with that reading, that's what is reproduced in the agenda. That lengthy title really says it all with respect to, to what this ordinance does, so I won't belabor the point. The ordinance was introduced by this board back in July. We went through the business impact statement processes required to do under Nevada law. You heard that item at your last meeting, where no substantial business impact state, business impact was found with respect to the ordinance. And I'm available for any questions at this point, thank you.
All right, since this is the second reading of this ordinance, any questions from the board? Saying none, this is for possible action, I will open this item for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Saying none. I will bring it back to the board, and I will move that we adopt ordinance 2024-1640 as presented, based upon public comment, the results of the business impact statement, outreach efforts, and the discussion of the county commission.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. If there's no further comment, I will call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, motion carries 5-0, thank you. We will move on to item number seven. For presentation only, announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and or commissions that they may be a member of, or a liaison to, or any other meetings, functions they have attended, or at any request. I hate it when you stick together.
You want me to start, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner for discussion for future agenda items. Sir.
Thank you, thank you. I did attend a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on Tuesday night. They were discussing their anticipated capital improvement projects bringing forward to the board in the next budgetary session. And I took the liberty or the opportunity to recuse myself from that discussion and vote, because that eventually will come before this board. And there were draft of their operations manual as well, or procedures manual, so. So I, I find myself doing that a lot at that board meeting, because most of these things that they discuss always come back to us, and so it's inappropriate for me to take way in at that time. Also, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday morning, so. And I just wanted to reiterate the, the placement of flags at our different, I believe they'll probably take place at our different cemeteries here in the county, recognizing our veterans, for Veterans Day, which is on, I believe, Monday is Veterans Day. So anyways, once again, thanks to all those in our community and nation that have served in the protection of our freedoms, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner knows that? Nope, nope, and Mr. Hill?
Yes, a few things. First out, I want to start with, I did go to the Dia de los Muertos celebration, which was a lot of fun. I think Gardinerville, Main Street, Main Street Gardinerville does that, and it was a great, great event. I also went to the Chamber of Commerce Community Recognition Awards, and those highlighted some really great people, especially the Henderson Award, which went to Marty Swisher, and I was very pleased to see his good work recognized. Now to my assignments on the board. I want to note that China Spring Youth Camp had engaged an external review of the PRIA requirements, and this is not the mandated review, this is a voluntary over and above review, because they want to perfect their practices. And I was in their meeting where the consultant presented his report, and I very much appreciated their extra efforts in implementing best practices and refining what they already do to make sure they're, they're even better. Although they were found to be in compliance already, they're, they're taking it a notch above. I wanted to report that the Carson Valley Arts Council has received the feasibility study for having the old Copland lumber building remodeled into an arts event center, performing arts center. And we've been waiting a long time for that feasibility study, and the, the, I'll just briefly say that the report is positive about that possibility. The Carson Water Subconservancy District is well underway in preparing for the strategic plan meeting, which will take place in next week. I will note that I have gone to the South Shore Transportation Management Association meetings, and yesterday was able to go to the Tahoe Transportation District meeting during the period of time when Commissioner Rice was unable to be there as an alternate. I was there as an alternate, his alternate. And I'll just note a couple things, in that meeting, the board appointed Jim Marino Acting Managing Director as of yesterday, and, and Carl Hasty then, who had already tendered his resignation, is relieved of that position with a lot of thanks from the members of that board. I will just note that they will, they will recruit for that position, but probably not until about February. And there, they will, that will give them time to sort some things out, including whether they're recruiting for the managing director or the assistant managing director position. And lastly, I will say about that, that I did share Douglas County's concerns with the JPA, and the fact that Nevada is not involved in the JPA as it has been organized, notwithstanding the apparent intended use of resources that are jointly held with California to benefit Nevada. So we, I did represent that very specifically, don't worry, I was very clear about that. That's my report, thanks. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, one more thing, it was the most important thing, it was listed at the top, and I missed it. I, I remain concerned about the painted rock mine impact on Johnson Lane, and I have been talking with the county manager regarding the, how does the county monitor the agreement? And how does the county implement, monitor and implement that agreement, and what are the mitigation efforts? And it is taking, it takes some time to figure those things out, but I want to note that work is underway on those things. I have a long list of concerns that fall under that category, and once we have enough information to be useful, I'll be reaching out to the Johnson Lane residents to, to convey that information.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to personally thank you, yesterday I had a major scheduling conflict, and as my alternate, you sat in the Tahoe Transportation District meeting. And I appreciate, number one, having you sit in, and number two, the impact you had on the meeting. I got several comments after I was able to re, reestablish my presence, and you did an outstanding job, and I want to thank you for that. And having done that, I will close this item, and we will go to closing public comment.
Feel like it's closing time at the bar, and I'm the last one here, too many times. Appreciate the comments on trying to monitor what's going on up there. The community is already doing that. We've come together and we have said that this is what we're going to be watching, and we're, we're watching for anything that they violate. Because we frankly don't trust Knox Excavation, to be honest, to their agreement. Couple of things were clarified, the use of water, they are paying for it. That will help some of the people up there that were paying huge water bills and thinking they were getting it for free. We'll let them know that they are paying for it. The pavement of the road, I understand it was in the last EA. When I said that we had been told that it wasn't going to be paved, that was before this thing really got going, when we were still discussing it and everything, and people were pretty upset about it, especially the way it's being paved and what it's going to do to the flow of water. I was up there this last rainstorm, it does change it. And I'll warn you now, you have a Stephanie lane problem developing up there, if we get a really big rainstorm. So that's somewhere's down the road. You've made a lot of enemies in the Johnson Lane area, I think you all know that. It would go a long ways if you can come up and convince them that you really are trying to limit the damage that Knox is going to do to the community. I don't know if it'll work, but it would behoove you and the county to do that. Every time I've come down here, I've tried to be very fair and very honest with how I react with you, not call you names, and not say you're a bunch of crooks and all this kind of stuff, even though others have done that, I think that's very unprofessional to do, everything. But I do think that one comment that was made with this last lawsuit that was just filed, and you guys finally came to a settlement, another individual from the area came up and said, we didn't have that opportunity. So, that's the way it's interpreted. And you need to look at it from that point of view, we have a lot of people up there. And I'll go back again to the blasting. This is an area where somebody is going to get hurt, because like this morning, my wife was out there riding her horse. If there had been a large explosion out there, it could have dismounted her. She's getting close to 80 years old, like I am. We can't fall off of a horse and bounce up like we used to. Now we just count the parts and see if they're all still there. They need to come up some way, not just of notifying you, the county, but of notifying the individuals. We have one member of our community that ran a huge gravel pit, and he said when they blasted, they had to notify everybody within a five mile area that they were doing that. They did, not the county, so that needs to be done, thank you.
Thank you, sir, any further public comment?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess I'd like to try to address that blasting issue. If, if I'm not mistaken, and hopefully Commissioner Hills can help me out here, or Mr. Ritchie. It's my understanding that with that agreement, they're required to provide the county with 30 days' notice if they anticipate that they might have to blast. And that is only if they get to a point in extracting material where it's not available, and they may have to free up some material. But they're required a 30-day notice to us. Now, I concur with, with, with Mr. Jackson that beyond just notifying the county, I, I would agree that we need to make sure that we have a mechanism in there that we would recognize and, and notify, whether it be the mail, social media, or whatever other means that we deem necessary to notify the residents that, that they're going to blast, because you're right, we have a lot of equestrians in that area and a lot of other people, and, and I, being a previous rider of horses, I understand how easily they spook, and, and how, how devastating it can be should, should you lose, lose control of that animal. So anyways, we are taking your concerns into, into account, and we'll work on mitigating methods.
Go to the mic, please.
Thank you, sorry. When I was in the service, I was in artillery. When we were going to be shooting, I can't hear myself either. Believe me, between the artillery and the naval gunfire, my ears are gone. When we were firing anything close to residential areas, and there was a few places at Camp Lejeune that qualified for that, the method that they used to notify everybody that we were going to be firing was they had a large siren that they would set off at least a half hour before we would start firing. That way, anybody that didn't see, and I know what you're thinking, but anybody that didn't see any advertisement to it, or didn't hear the radio or anything like that, at least had some kind of warning about 15, 20 minutes before the blast was going to go off.
Just don't do it at five o'clock, or whatever time we're.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. And the county manager would like to have the microphone for a moment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I just wanted to jump in, I, I know there is a high level of interest in the painted rock mine matter, and I know in particular, members of this board remain concerned that the county takes care of the residents of Johnson Lane, and I have heard that from each member of this commission. I will be bringing back an informational agenda item to a future board meeting in which we share with the public the steps that we have taken to monitor this project. Additionally, we are setting up an informational webpage with accurate information regarding the ongoing operations of the mine, and we appreciate Mr. Maxwell's input on that, so that we can make sure that that information that we share on our webpage is the most current information. We'll be launching that shortly, and I do intend to bring in a informational presentation back too. And I thank the members of the public for their continued interest in this project. If anyone has any additional questions or concerns, Mr. Jackson, in the neighborhood, and they want to speak to someone, I would encourage them to call my office. Additionally, if they have concerns regarding the enforcement of the agreement at this point, I would refer them to Douglas County Code Enforcement. We are out and actively patrolling the area and monitoring the situation currently.
Thank you. And if there's no further public comment, we are adjourned.